I now declare the annual town meeting for the town of Stockbridge come to order. Article one. Has everyone here used the clickers in the past? All right, with enough knows, Jessica's going to explain to us how to use them again.
Hello, everybody. Essentially, what you have there is a RF LCD device. It has an LCD screen in the upper left-hand side. Is this a little bit better?
Yes.
Okay. So if you look at the screen here, you're going to see a picture of your LCD card. We are going to primarily use the one and the two buttons, so one for yes, two for no. When you enter an answer, your answer will briefly show on the LCD screen in front of you, and a green light will flicker. It'll then go back into sleep mode until the next question, and then you'll simply press one or two. I have a couple of test questions for you. Does anybody have any questions before we move to those test questions? Press one, yes. The last answer that you press is what is recorded. So if you make a mistake, you accidentally hit one but you meant to hit two, as long as you do it before the 10-second timer, you can change your answer. The last thing that you press is saved as your official answer. You guys ready to try it? All right. So my first test question to you, are the Celtics going to take it all? Press one for yes, two for no, vote now. Pretty close, pretty close. One more test question for you. Are you ready for summer? Press one for yes, two for no. Please vote, please vote now. Does anybody have any questions? Yes, sir. You do not. That black box is, the 10-second counter is the last 10 seconds that you have. So after the, you see the question, which in this case, it'll say Article One, yes or no, as soon as you see that Article One, for example, you can start your vote.
Any further questions? Seeing none, move on to Article one.
Hello, good evening. Article one, I move that the following officers be chosen for the year commencing July 1st, 2024. Fence viewers, Gary Johnson and Christopher B. Marsden. Measurers of wood, William Markham and Mark Fadding. Measurers of coal, H. Linden Searing and Nicholas F. Nadorf. Weirs of sand and gravel, John Jake Donovan and Clinton Schneider. Field drivers, Gary Johnson.
Article one has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? I think they spelled my name wrong. But you heard what was said. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we proceed to vote. All those in favor of Article one, please, please press one on your clicker. Can everyone see the results? Yes, yeses have 135, nos, looks like two. I know it's going to have to wear these tonight for some reason. Article one is passed. Article two.
Good evening. Article two, I move that the town accept all printed reports of town officers and committees as published in the annual report.
Article two has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, we proceed to vote. All those in favor of Article two, press one. Opposed, press two. Article two has been passed, 138 to one. Article three.
Good evening. Article three, I move that the town pursuant to Chapter 41, Section 108 of the Massachusetts General Law fix annual salaries and compensation of all elected officers of the town for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2024 as follows. Moderator, 300. Select Board, Chair, 6,500. Two members at 5,500 for a total of 11,000. Town Clerk, 63,525. Board of Assessors, Chair at 3,987. Two members at 3,193 for a total of 6,386. Three Wardens, $2,366.
Article three has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Yes. Yeah, mine went way up, so I'm sure the others did too. Oh, the question, the question was, and we really have to use the microphone, but for you, I'll help out right now and say, she wanted to know if any of the salaries went up. And as I said, mine did, but I don't know. Do we have, do we have the answer to that? Jay?
The select board salary went up for the chair from 5,500 to 6,500, for the other two members from 4,500 to 5,500. I will point out that, that I believe the, the old salary's been in place for about 10 years. And, and, but nevertheless, that's the answer to that question. I think the rest of them were, were up. Have you moderated like $25 more?
Fifty.
Fifty, all right. You're worth every penny.
So yes, the raises are in place. Should be noted at this time that the Finance Committee has moved unanimously to approve all the financial articles on the warrant as they appear tonight. So is there any other discussion on the Article three? Yes. Yeah, again, could you possibly use the mic? Because this is being televised live, and it's really fair to our audience in TV land that they can't hear the questions.
The particular salaries proposed seem to me entirely reasonable, but I'm wondering...
All right, could you, you got to speak into the mic a little more.
The, the, okay, the, the particular raises offered seem to me entirely reasonable, but I wonder if there is a long-term impact on the fringe benefits that the town will have to pay for.
Michael?
So currently, any elected position that earns over $5,000, if the individual serves for more than 10 years, they would be eligible for a pension. So that does impact them. So they would be able to retire from the town.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we proceed to vote. All those in favor of Article three, please click one. Opposed, click two. Article three is passed, 136 in favor, 14 opposed. I'm going to call on the Chairman of the Finance Committee, Jay Wachowski, to read Article four. And typically, if there's any question on any of these items, we would ask someone to just call out "hold." And if we need to go back at the end of this long list, we will only pick out the ones that we need, we need to discuss further. Jay?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Article four, as it is represented here, is the appropriation of $8,403,222. That appropriation, can everybody hear me okay? That appropriation represents the operating budget of Stockbridge without, without education, minus education. And just so that we have a little perspective, without education, that represents an increase of 6.71% or $528,303.93 over fiscal year 24. Now, when we look at all of these, and this is a little cumbersome, but please forgive me, Article four really needs to be combined with Article five, which is the Berkshire Hills Regional School District operating budget, and Article six, the capital budget for Berkshire Hills Regional School. And if combined, that's Article four, Article five, and Article six, the total of that represents $12,268,406 or an increase of 4.9% or $581,846 over fiscal year 24. So basically, I'm happy to go through all of these. If you want to know the differences, or we can take questions, whatever, whatever you folk, you citizens prefer.
Gail Shaw in Stockbridge. I'm wondering...
Yeah, yeah. You have to be right on top.
Okay. I'm just wondering where the largest increase in expenditures exists, under what category?
Let me, this is, it's a very fair question, and what I will do is very briefly go through the categories as was asked. General government is actually representing a decrease of 2.1% over fiscal year 24. Public safety, that includes fire, police, ambulance, building inspector, represents an increase of 2.57 or $48,606 over fiscal year 24. Education, we're going to leave that off, but basically, that would be Article five represents an increase of 2.92% or $109,564 over fiscal year 24. And the prime increase in education is the operating budget, which includes salaries, it includes technology, and it includes transportation and benefits. Okay. Now, public works, public works and facilities is a 26.75% increase or $435,679. And that probably is the largest of the increases, and it is as a result of salaries, which are part of contract negotiation and cost of living increases. That goes between 5 and 7%. Salaries for highway, and also the transfer station has increased significantly with respect to salaries and expenses, that's removal of the refuse from the transfer station. Very expensive. It has to be sorted, separated, and taken to different sites. And also sewer and water salaries and sewer and water debt, where basically the pump station has been put into this category. So in answer to your question, I would say that public works and facilities is the highest increase of 26.75. Human services includes the border health, an increase of 11.27%. That's an increase in tri-town health. Health expenses are on the increase. We share tri-town health with Lennox and Lee, Lennox, Lee, and Stockbridge. And culture and recreation, predominantly the library, is an increase of 17%. The library includes not only salary, but tech, but technology and also supplies and materials. Debt service, that is the loans that we take out, has decreased 9.15% with the retirement of debt. And employee benefits, everybody knows, healthcare, dental, retirement has increased 6.1% or So again, the greatest increase, as was the question raised, would represent public works and facilities. And that deals with road maintenance, with stow removal and so forth. So I, I hope I have answered your question. And when we look at this again, we look at it with Articles four, five, and six representing a 4.9% increase over fiscal year 24. Thank you.
At this time, before we call for a motion on Article four, I want to just thank the Finance Committee once again for the many hours of service they put in, totally without compensation, and they have done another excellent job this year, and I just want to thank all you folks for your time. I would like to call on Patrick.
Do we have a question?
Henry Kirchner. Henry, 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 you got to hold on one second. We need to, we can't discuss anything until we get this. We need the motion. And then if it's about four, stay there, otherwise you have to wait.
I move that the town raise and appropriate a sum of $8,403,220 to defray the expenses of the various departments of the town for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2024 in accordance with the recommendations of the Finance Committee.
Article four has been moved and seconded. Henry, is there a discussion?
Yeah, you said the round number, $13 million was the expenditure? Was, that was the number?
The total, the grand total.
Total, grand total?
Of three. Of the three.
Of the three?
The total for those, for those three articles, forgive me, is $12,268,406, an increase of $581,847 or 4.9%. That's combined with education and operating costs, an increase over fiscal year 24.
Okay, to put this in perspective, can you tell us what we took in for that year?
Say that again, Henry, please.
Can you tell us what we took in for that year, for revenues?
Have we taken in a revenue for this budget yet?
Basically, if, if, if we look at assessments for this year, which is the basis of our revenue, we will project a slightly increased, slightly increased tax rate. It's very preliminary, but with that comes new growth, which has not been calculated yet, which will give us a very competitive tax rate to fiscal year 24. Okay? So basically, yes, there are, there is growth to offset this increase.
Henry, you got to use the mic, please.
You can't give us a rough idea, projected revenues coming in? Just so we can put it in perspective of what we're spending and what we're, what we're going to take in anticipating.
Yes, so, yes, just had to pull up the information, so, just took a moment. So our total revenues for next year are projected at $6,469,414. These are from local receipts, money taken in for water and sewer, then general state aid, which is different amounts, so I can run you through all of them. So let's see, local receipts, we're estimating $2,400,000. State aid is $211,000. Community preservation will bring in about 500. That's a combination of tax revenue and a match from the state. We have free cash, which is remaining money that's available for other funding sources. Retained earnings from water and sewer, which is, will be about 105, and then 1.6 million of it that we'll use directly for the cost of those departments.
So it's less than what we are spending? If you add all that up?
Yes, and then the remainder is tax revenue. So real estate taxes.
Which you don't have numbers for, rough numbers?
Well, yes.
I mean, I'm just trying to get a, so, you know, my head wrapped around this of whether we're spending more than we're making.
No, we're not spending more than we make. So it gets a little complicated because there's other receipts and costs that come in. The total tax levy next year is about $9 million. We're projecting a tax rate of 7.68, which is an increase of about $240 on the average tax bill, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there any further discussion on Article four? Seeing none, we proceed to vote. All those in favor of Article four, please press one. Opposed, press two. Article four is passed, 141, yes, eight, no. Article five.
I move that the, I move that the town raise and appropriate a sum of $3,797,541 for the fiscal year '25 assessment of the Berkshire Hills Regional School District.
Article five has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Yes, Peter.
Peter Schneier, One Mohawk Lake Road. How many students do we send to the Berkshire Hills Regional School District? Do we know?
111.
111? Thank you.
Yes.
I'm Eileen Samiattan from Interlake and Crossroad. I, I was given to understand that part of this budget is a fairly substantial raise for the superintendent, and in light of the issue that happened with the book situation and the accusations made against teachers in the district, I'm just wondering what the rationale for that was, if, if indeed that's an accurate thing, and whether that's any, anything that we need to be talking about at all.
Well, the superintendent usually attends. Is he here this evening? Okay, so he had surgery, and there's supposed to be a school committee person here, two. Okay, Michael?
So in regard to a school budget, a school budget is an omnibus budget. It is just a single number. As far as the details of how it's broken up within the budget, that's a vote of the school department itself. So we only vote on the overall single number for the school.
Sounds like we don't have the answer to your question, I'm sorry. Any other questions? Discussion? Seeing none, we proceed to vote. All those in favor of Article five, please press one. Opposed, press two. Article five has passed, 131 to 16. Article six.
I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $69,145 to pay the town share of the principal and interest due in the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2024 for the financing of the Berkshire Hills Regional School District school building construction projects.
Article six has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Henry?
Do you have any idea when this is possibly going to happen? This reconstruction of the school building?
It's an ongoing project, as you recall, the vote was... Maintenance, okay. Yes. Okay. Article, we're going to vote on Article six. Article, we're gonna vote on Article six. There doesn't seem to be an answer to that question from the floor. Unless... Yeah, it's, it's for ongoing maintenance, right now, projects, yeah. Yeah, Bill?
I'm Bill Vogt, I'm a member of the, uh, school committee, and, uh, the answer to the question of when the new building or the reconstr- uh, the, um, uh, renovation of the old building will happen, has not been, um, decided yet. There is still an early planning stage going on. There's a building committee chaired by someone in the audience. Jason St. Peter is here, I think. Um, but, uh, work continues with consultants and with architects. I don't see anything happening before 2026, um, realistically. And there's no decision on whether we're going to demolish and build something new, or renovate and expand, or do anything else. We're still working on what we can do with the support of the Commonwealth.
Thank you, Bill. Any further discussion on Article six? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please press one. Opposed, press two. Article six has passed, one thirty-five to fourteen, against. Article seven.
Article seven. I move that the amend the general and zoning bylaws in every instance in which the following words and phrases are found by replacing A, select man with select board member, B, select men with select board members, C, board of select men with select board, and chair man with chair, and further, to authorize the town clerk to make non-substantive ministerial revisions to the bylaws to effectuate these revisions. Regardless of such normanclature, the select board shall have all the powers and duties of a board of select men under the general laws, any special acts applicable to the town of Stockbridge, and as provided in the town's bylaws or regulations.
Article seven has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Dick?
Hello, I'm Richard Jackson of forty-seven Interlake and Road and eleven Prospect Hill. Uh, I'm gonna vote against this article. Uh, it's probably an uphill battle, I expect to be on the losing side. It certainly is the trend in our part of the country. Uh, the other day I wrote a letter to The Eagle in which I made a reference to the Board of Selectmen, only to find that when it was published in the paper, they had changed it to select board. So I called them up, and they said, "Well, it's because it's our style." So it is the style, it's, it's coming. But the reason I'm against it is that I see it as another arrow in the quiver full of grievances that the right wing has. I think that, uh, really by having a fixation, preoccupation with little things like gender and microaggressions and pronouns, it's a sort of a minor, little petty McCarthyism of the left that only serves to embolden and really encourage the much more dangerous McCarthyism of the right. So that's why I'm gonna vote against it. I would love to know how Mary Flynn Wood have voted.
Anybody know the answer to that question? Any further discussion? On Article seven? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please click. We are very fortunate to have the clickers to use tonight, because this is a two-thirds vote. And it makes it so much quicker to use your clicker. All those in favor of Article seven, please click one. Opposed, click two. We can see the number is eighty-seven percent, I believe, is that, yes? Yep. One thirty-four, yes, twenty, no, comes out to eighty-seven percent, yes. Article seven has passed. Article eight.
I move that the town accept Section C of Chapter ninety of the general laws, which would authorize the Board of Selectmen to establish a speed limit of twenty-five miles per hour on any roadway in thickly settled or business districts within the town that is not a state highway in the interests of public safety.
Article eight has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Yes, Peter?
Peter Schneier, One Mohawk. Um, I guess my question is, number one, I'm probably gonna get a bunch of speeding tickets, but the other thing is, um, the, the, my, my question is, are we gonna change, like, the thirty and thirty-fives all to twenty-five? So, have we appropriated money for new signs? Um, are we just putting signs up on roads that don't have signs? Or are we changing existing speed limits and lowering them?
Michael?
Well, there would be some cost to signs that we would have to put up as you're entering town. There are other communities where, as you enter the count, it will say twenty-five mile an hour townwide speed limit. Now, this doesn't change Route seven, it won't change one oh-two, it won't change one eighty-three, and there are some roads that already had speed studies, which may have established other speed limits. And I did list those, um, and I'll make sure that they're online so people can see. Uh, but we will be petitioning for some of those roads to also get reduced back to twenty-five, and this would allow us to just enforce townwide a measure that has passed quite a bit on the eastern part of the state, which just reduces the overall speed of traffic, so I hope that that helps.
Any further discussion? Article eight. Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of Article eight, please press one. Opposed, press two. The vote is one oh-three in favor, forty-seven against. Article eight has passed. Article nine.
I move that the town appropriate and transfer from available free cash the following expenses for the year as read by the moderator, accepting those items held, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation.
Article nine. Number one, transfer and appropriate thirteen thousand dollars for the purpose of funding replacement SCBA self-contained breathing apparatus for the Stockbridge Fire Department. Number two, transfer and appropriate forty-two thousand, five hundred dollars for the purpose of funding the mental health co-responder program for the Stockbridge Police Department. Number three, transfer and appropriate one hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of paying the remaining balance of the bond anticipated note for the highway trucks. Transfer and appropriate five hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of funding bridge reconstruction and repairs. Number five, transfer and appropriate fifty thousand dollars for the purpose of funding engineering for town projects. Number six, transfer and appropriate sixty-five thousand dollars for the purp- purpose of funding a John Deere thirty-four-six tractor for the Highway Department. Number seven, transfer and appropriate two hundred and seventy thousand dollars for the purpose of funding a large plow truck for the Highway Department. Number eight, transfer and appropriate one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the purpose of funding a roadside mower for the Highway Department. Number nine, transfer and appropriate seventy thousand dollars for, for the purpose of funding a one-ton pickup truck for the Highway Department. Number ten, transfer and appropriate twenty-five thousand dollars for the purpose of funding the structural painting of the transfer station. Tran- number eleven, transfer and appropriate eighty thousand dollars for the purpose of tuition and transportation to Taconic High School for its career exploratory program. Number twelve, transfer and appropriate thirteen thousand, five hundred for the purpose of funding repeaters for the Stockbridge Police Department. Number thirteen. Transfer and appropriate seventy-five thousand dollars for the purpose of planned development and permitting for the Stockbridge Bowl dredging project. And number fourteen, to transfer and appropriate twenty-five thousand, one hundred, twenty-two dollars for the final costs associated with five-twenty, two thousand and nineteen, annual town meeting, Article eighteen, for the construction of the Highway Garage. Were there any holds on any of those? Any questions? I heard none. Henry?
Uh, line item four for the bridge reconstruction. Can anybody tell us what the status is of the Glendale Bridge?
Michael can handle that?
The Glendale Bridge, it, as probably most of you have noted, has been reduced to one lane. Um, we have had, uh, Ty and Bond Engineering Company do their initial assessment, and we're gonna be getting the, uh, report very shortly. Uh, my plan is to be, uh, putting before the select board a list of all of our bridges, all of our culverts, all of our other projects that need to be funded. Uh, right now, we're waiting for that final report, which will give us an idea of what the cost will be to replace the Glendale Bridge.
So chances are, nothing's gonna happen until next voting season?
Most likely, no, but by having this money, I could move forward with what's called construction drawings, which will usually be ten to twelve percent of the project cost. So in case there's, this ends up being a multimillion dollar project, we can at least get to work on that. Most likely would be something coming up in the next, uh, next town meeting.
Okay, and, and what about the Interlake and Bridge? The Stone Bridge?
Uh, that one, we have an assessment that's done, it's actually posted online, the Curtisville Bridge, um, showing the different options that are available, from removal to replacement to full build, whether pedestrian or, or, uh, traffic. And the select board's gonna be making some decisions on those, which more likely would also be another bridge coming up next year, so.
Okay, thank you.
Ron?
Uh, Ron Brooker, uh, Eight Old Tree Farm Road. Eight Old Tree Farm Road, Ron Brooker. My question is Article thirteen in this scenario. The seventy-five thousand dollars for the study of the dredging, is that the total cost of this planned, uh, project? Or are we sharing it with the Stockbridge Bowl Association, or is the town ponying up for the whole thing again?
So the question Ron asked, just so we can ask, is, uh, whether the seventy-five thousand is all of it? Is there more? Is the Stockbridge Bowl Association coming up with some money? Is that, am I correct, Ron?
Yes.
Yes. So the seventy-five thousand in front of you right now, um, includes, um, we're also gonna be later asking for thirty-five thousand, I think it's thirty, or thirty-two-five, from CPC for the funding of the dredging project. Um, right now, the SBA has CPC money that they were awarded before that they're using toward this project. The two articles right now you have in front of us that are gonna come up about dredging, the seventy-five, and then the, let me give you the exact number. Thirty, thirty-two thousand, five hundred. Um, those two together are going to go toward the dredging project, which would get us all the work that we need to do for FY twenty-five to move us all, um, toward completion. The town has applied for a dredging grant from the state for three hundred thousand dollars, which if we receive, we wouldn't need to use this seventy-five thousand, it would get us all the way to construction, uh, uh, design and be ready to go out to bid. So if we line that up, we would be coming back to the town for fiscal year twenty-seven with a request or, and what funds that SBA has to match in order to actually do the dredging project. But this is to actually bring the final, um, construction drawing, the rest, to a conclusion by FY twenty-seven.
So the, the whole, the whole project is being paid for by the town at this point?
See, if you count, yes, between CPC funds that are being appropriated, CPC funds that were awarded in the past, right now the town is, I know that the SBA has about one point five million set aside for the actual construction and, um, dredging project itself.
Which will cover the whole thing again.
We'll better know that once we get the full dredging done, and right now, we're very hopeful that we'll get the three hundred thousand dollar grant, which would then not have to have any additional funds until its actual construction cost monies.
Thank you.
Henry, what is, what does CPC stand for?
Community Preservation Committee, and that's money that's...
Which is a town organization?
I- it's a town board that awards funds, um, to different organizations and the town itself. Uh, it's a three percent additional tax that is on top of your regular taxes, and then it's a match from the state that comes in. There's particular rules on how that money is used and then appropriated out.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. Article nine. All those in favor, please press one. Opposed, press two. Article nine has passed, one forty-two, nine, against. Article ten.
Article ten. I move that the town appropriate from available sewer, available surplus, the expenses for the year as read by the moderator, accepting those items held, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation.
So Article ten. Number one, transfer and appropriate one hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars for the purpose of funding various sewer, sewer main replacements. Okay, it's moved and seconded. That is part one. I think we better vote on these separately, yes? Okay. Is there any discussion, further discussion on Article, uh, Article ten? Is there any discussion, further discussion on Article ten, section one? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of Article ten? Oh, okay. Oh, yes. So... But... Okay. All right, since it's not held, we're going to move on to the next one. Article ten, section two. Transfer and appropriate twelve thousand dollars for the purpose of funding sludge pump demolition and reinstallment of new pump. Any interest in a hold on this one? No. Article ten, section three. Transfer and appropriate forty-one thousand one hundred five dollars for the purpose of reducing the amount to be raised through sewer rates for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five. No hold on any of these, so we can vote on all three. All those in favor of Article ten, sections one, two, and three, please press one. Opposed, press two. Article ten has passed. One forty-four, yes. Seven, no. Article eleven.
I move that the town appropriate from available water operations reserve fund the expenses for the year as read by the moderator, except those items held, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation.
Article eleven has been moved and seconded. Article eleven, section one. Transfer and appropriate twenty-five thousand dollars for the purpose of funding the purchase of five fire hydrants. Any hold on number one? Seeing none, we'll go on to section two. Transfer and appropriate fifteen thousand dollars for the purchase of funding the replacement of the water plant loading dock exterior stairway. No hold. Section three. Transfer and appropriate twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars for the purpose of epoxying the water plant floor. No hold. Section four. Transfer and appropriate fifty thousand dollars for the purpose of funding geological survey of the Lake Avrick water supply. Why are we doing a geological survey? Let's see. Water and Sewers Superintendent?
Yes, Michael Befoni. Good evening, everybody. Water Superintendent. In the last few years, we've been really trying to pin down a number for our water supply, our single water supply we have for our town. It's called a safe yield number, and we're trying to really pin down how much water is really available in our reservoir. Any utility needs to know this number. And we have a lot of groundwater influence from the mountain behind our reservoir. So Mass Geological Survey at UMass Amherst, we've been chatting with quite a bit, with thanks to Denny Alsop helping us with this. And we're moving forward, and they got some really amazing study and technology they can use to really help us find this number we've been searching for for a while. We've... It's been really tough, but this is the last, hopefully the last, part of the puzzle, to know what our reservoir is really capable of.
And Mike, just for everyone's information, this money is available in your reserve fund, and it's no additional tax burden on the town?
Correct. All of these, Article eleven, all seven of these are water available surplus that do not affect the tax rate.
Thank you. Moving on to section five. Transfer and appropriate twenty-five thousand dollars for the purchase of funding the water main replacement engineering. Hearing no holds, move on to section six. Transfer and appropriate four hundred fifty thousand dollars for the purpose of funding various water main replacements. Moving on. Section seven. Transfer and appropriate sixty-four thousand two hundred seventy-eight dollars for the purchase of reducing the amount to be raised through water rates for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five. Seeing no hold, we'll proceed to vote on Article eleven in its entirety. Sections one through seven. All those in favor, please press one. Opposed, press two. Article eleven has passed. One hundred forty-five, yes. Three, no. Article twelve.
Article twelve. I move that the town appropriate or reserve for future appropriation monies from Community Preservation Fund annual revenues, specific reserves or other available funds for the administrative expenses of the Community Preservation Committee, the payment of debt service, the undertaking of community preservation projects, and all of the necessary and proper expenses for the year as read by the moderator, except those items held, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation. And further, the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to execute agreements on terms acceptable to the Board to the extent necessary to effectuate the public benefits of such projects.
Article twelve has been moved and seconded, and we have... Twenty-one of these to go through. So bear with me, please. Article twelve, section one. Appropriate from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund balance, a sum of thirty-two thousand five hundred for the affordable housing purposes, to be used by the Town of Stockbridge for the funding of the Stockbridge Housing Trust. Any holds on that? None. Section two. Appropriate from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund balance, the sum of seventy-three thousand four hundred fifty for the affordable housing purposes to be used by Pine Woods for reconstruction of decks and gutters. Seeing no holds, we'll move on. Number three. Appropriate from the... I'm going to call this the C-P-U-F balance, the sum of thirty-two thousand four hundred seventy-six for the affordable housing purposes to be used by Stockbridge Housing Authority for replacement of damaged siding boards. No holds, we'll go on to five. Nope. We've got to do four. Appropriate from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund balance, a sum of twenty-six thousand dollars with thirteen thousand for the affordable housing purposes, and thirteen thousand from historic preservation to be used by Riverbrook for the replacement of the chimney. Section five. Appropriate from the C-P-U-F balance, a sum of one hundred fifty-one thousand one hundred seventy-five dollars for historic preservation purposes to be used by Waldorf, Berkshire Waldorf High School for the restoration of Old Town Hall. Did a clerk make a note that number five, section five, has a hold? Number six. Section six. Appropriate from the C-P-U-F balance, a sum of thirty-two thousand five hundred for historic preservation purposes to use by the Town of Stockbridge Cemetery Commission for the restoration of historic... of the historic Hearse House. Seven. Appropriate from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund balance, a sum of thirty-seven thousand nine hundred ninety-eight dollars for historic preservation purposes to be used by St. Joseph's Cemetery Arch Committee for the arch and pillars restoration. Number eight. Appropriate from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund balance, a sum of one hundred twenty-nine thousand one hundred eighty-five dollars for historic preservation purposes to be used by the St. Paul's Church for roof restoration and water abatement. Number nine. Appropriate from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund balance, a sum of fourteen thousand one hundred sixty-five dollars for historic preservation purposes to be used by the Stockbridge Library, using museum and archives for an archival table case. Number ten. Appropriate from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund balance, a sum of eighteen thousand five hundred twenty-five dollars for historic preservation purposes to be used by Tree on Main LLC for painting of the Garryary Building, Forty Main Street. There's a hold on number ten. Appropriate from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund balance, a sum of twelve thousand eight hundred seventy dollars for historic preservation purposes to be used by the Town of Stockbridge Cemetery Commission for the restoration of the granite posts. Number twelve. Appropriate from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund balance, a sum of thirty-two thousand five hundred for open space recreational purposes to be used by the Town of Stockbridge for the Stockbridge Bowl dredging project. Number thirteen. Appropriate from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund balance, a sum of one thousand seven hundred twenty-three dollars for open space recreational purposes to be used by Kripala for invasive species mitigation. Hold on number thirteen, please. Number fourteen. Appropriate from the C-P-U-F balance, a sum of fifteen thousand five hundred for open space recreational purposes to be used by the Town of Stockbridge Parks and Recreation Committee for basketball, pole, and backboard replacement at Pine Street and Main Street. Number fifteen. Appropriate from the C-P-U-F balance, a sum of eight thousand two hundred fifty dollars for open space recreational purposes to be used by the Friends of Gold Meadows for work at Gold Meadows to preserve open space by removal of invasive species, tree, and garden work. Number fifteen has a hold, requested. Number sixteen. Appropriate from the Community Preservation Open Space Reserve Balance, a sum of three thousand two hundred fifty dollars for open space recreational purposes to be used by Stockbridge Housing Authority for raised flower beds and compost area. Number seventeen. Appropriate from the Community Preservation Open Space Reserve Balance, a sum of three thousand two hundred fifty dollars for open space recreational purposes to be used by the Stockbridge Bowl Association for work at Bullard Woods to preserve open space by removal of invasive species and required permitting. Number seventeen has a hold. Number eighteen. Appropriate from the Community Preservation Historic Preservation Reserve Balance, a sum of one hundred ninety-nine dollars for historic preservation purposes to be used by the Town of Stockbridge for work on the Civil War Monument. Number nineteen. Appropriate from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund balance, a sum of twelve thousand for the fiscal year twenty-five CPC administrative budget. Number twenty. Appropriate from the Community Preservation Administration Fund balance, a sum of four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars for the Berkshire Theatre Group to develop a plan to preserve their vast archival collection. Number twenty-one. Reserve to the Historic Resources Reserve, the Community Housing Reserve, and the Open Space Reserve from Community Preservation Anticipated Fiscal Year Twenty-five Annual Revenue... revenues of thirty-five thousand four hundred fifty-two dollars for each category. We will now return to discuss the holds. Starting with, I believe, number five. Okay, what we're going to do is vote on the non-hold items first, so we can get those out of the way. So, there's no further discussion on the non-hold items, so what we're going to do is ask you to vote on those. So all those in favor of the non-hold items, please press one. Opposed, press two. The non-hold items have passed by a count of one thirty-five, yes. Thirteen, no's. We will now start discussion on number five first.
Peter Schnire, one Mohawk Lake Road. I was thrilled when I saw the work start on the Old Town Hall, a building that, when we abandoned it, we couldn't give back to anybody, and have paid, I don't know how many dollars over the years to maintain it. But now, we're giving a nonprofit, one hundred and fifty-one thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars of taxpayer money. This is a tax on you people, a three-percent tax on taxpayers in town, and we're giving this to a nonprofit. I am delighted that they're going to have the building. I don't think the taxpayers should be funding nonprofits.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on number five? Sally?
So, obviously, we all know that the Town Hall has been a relic and an albatross for the town for a long time. It's suffered a great deal of damage due to lack of having anything going on in there. We've had to re-roof it. It's been a really expensive thing, and we... I feel that we were very fortunate for the Waldorf School to come forward and take over this piece of property for the town. The reason that we chose to fund this part of this... It's only a very small part of the renovation, is that the area that they have requested the funding for is the public meeting space upstairs, and that will be accessible now by an elevator that they're going to be putting in, so it will be ADA accessible, which it was not before, which is why it was abandoned as Town Hall in the first place. And understand that many of these buildings that we see in town that are... We're funding through this community preservation have to meet certain standards that are set forth by the secretary and be on the historic register. So they have to... They have to meet that hurdle before we even consider what we're going to recommend to Town Meeting to fund. Town Hall has certainly met all of those... All of those criteria, and we always look at what the public benefit of anything that we recommend funding for. This space will be available to the citizens of Stockbridge for meetings and gatherings and, I don't know, weddings and bar mitzvahs. I don't know what it's going to be available for, but it is going to be a public space.
Thank you, Sally. Wayne?
Hi, Wayne Slazek, Hill Road. I agree with Peter. I would love to know if the school has been fully funded at this point. It's my understanding that it has been, and if it has been, then one hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, I think, is a big ask. So I would... If there's an explanation on that, I would love to hear it.
We have Patrick?
I've got a couple of hats, and one is I'm the Chief Financial Officer of the Berkshire Waldorf High School. So, a couple of things. The total project budget is eight million dollars. It started off at four million. Construction inflation has roughly doubled it in the last five years. Tomorrow, there's a press release going out about an anonymous donor that has donated an additional four million dollars to close the gap. The project is still approximately a hundred thousand dollars short, so we're doing better. Just in the last week... Just in the last week, we've approved overages that pretty much eaten up the contingency budget because everything from the front beam to the back beam to the reinforcements that are necessary inside the building, to the amount of steel that we had to pour to the basement, to the, believe me, if I'm getting any of this wrong, it's because this is the first construction project I've ever had to be involved in. The point I'm simply making is this: Had you guys needed to tear that building down because it was full of asbestos and lead paint, you would have been looking at a million-dollar expense to either the church or the town, or both, or whoever's going to fight over paying for it. I am, I am standing over here because I am not unbiased in stating this, but I believe that the town got a really good deal by having the incredibly generous folks who put up the money, the vast majority of this $8 million, to keep those kids in this, in this town, buying lunches, you know, and put that building to use that's been here since 1839. Thank you.
I just also wanted to say that the Waldorf School system, yes, it's private. I understand what the points are, but it also is a very popular private school, and I do believe that it will bring in families with children into this town, and God knows we need that.
Wayne?
I would just like to say, certainly, it's a wonderful project. It's not that the project itself is a problem. I'm thrilled that the town didn't have to spend the money to do that, but now that it's been funded to the tune of $8 million, and we're, I guess, $800,000 short, or $80,000, I'm not sure what you said, but I still think $151 is a, is a big ask from the town itself.
Thank you, Wayne. Next. Any further discussion on five?
Keep in mind that the community preservation is designed to help with historic buildings and the town. The old town hall is an historic building. They have the right to ask, and we recommend funding it.
Further discussion?
So, Peter Strauss, 9 Oak Street. There are any number of items on this ask that involve nonprofits and at least one for-profit institution, and I perfectly understand the comment that Sally Underwood's just Some of these nonprofits could help support the town. We have a project underway to encourage nonprofits' payments in lieu of taxes, and hopefully that will work. In the past, it has led to a fair amount of revenue being given to the town by people who are not obliged to pay taxes, and this kind of reciprocity seems to me to be a sensible thing to have happen.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article 12, Section 5? Hearing none, we proceed to vote. On Article 12, Section 5, please press one for yes, two for no. Article 12, Section 5 has passed, 126 to 26, no. Article 12, Section 10, is it? Section 10. Anyone want to speak to that? Peter?
Here I am again. $18,525 of taxpayer dollars are going to paint a building in Main Street that I believe, I may be wrong, generates rent, rental incomes. I don't know how this could, I'm thinking everybody on Main Street needs to go, come up with a price and get their house painted and let the taxpayers do it. I mean, I'm just mind-boggled by this. It's just, it's unbelievable.
Is there an answer? Sally?
Yes, so once again, it has to pass the secretary's standards for an historic building, which it has done. They had requested quite a lot more, and I can't remember what it was, for work on the building, and we, we winnowed it down to the painting of the exterior because we felt that that was most visible to the town, and, and it fit in with our idea of what we would like to see for historic preservation in town.
Any further discussion? Section 10, Article 12? If not, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, press one; opposed, press two. Article 12, Section 10 has passed. The vote was 100 yes, 46 no. We'll move on to Article 12, Section 13. Someone want to discuss that? Peter's ready.
Sorry, folks, I'm having a little difficulty with the free spending here. At one time, and I actually need this question answered before I say anything, Kripala used to make a donation in lieu of taxes, which a lot of nonprofits don't do, to be completely honest with you, if you look it up. Is there still, do they still make a donation to the town?
Kripala, like a num, I'm sorry, Kripala, like a number of our nonprofits, really struggled during COVID and nearly, nearly ceased operations. It's my understanding that since COVID, they have not made a payment in lieu of taxes, though many of our nonprofits also haven't done it as they've struggled to come out. I wanted to just also address what I think is a bit of a misperception tonight. All the other articles have to do with government spending, and whether you're, you know, for the schools or, you know, whatever it is, that's fine. Community preservation was adopted 20 years ago with the specific intent of funding historic preservation, open space, or, or housing projects. Almost all of those projects are third-party organizations. Now, Stockbridge adopted, other towns, I spoke in Sheffield when, because they're considering adopting that this year, and they're looking to adopt at 1%. When you guys voted this in 20 years ago, you voted in at 3%, so we get a match that is way more from the state, making the money go that much further than it normally does. And I just wanted to point out to folks that the purpose of this is so that a nonprofit can come and apply for, or anyone, can come and apply for things that fall into those three buckets: open space, historic preservation, or housing. So, there's nothing untoward about this money going to those types of organizations. It's exactly what it's there for.
So, so in rebuttal to your, Kripala suffered during COVID, I'm a business owner. Nobody gave me anything off of my taxes, felt bad for me that we closed our businesses for three months, and, you know, I'm still here surviving, and nobody's giving me any money. I'm not receiving any money from taxpayers for my businesses.
But this has nothing to do with COVID. This has to do with CPC.
You just said it was COVID. You just said that during COVID, they struggled. Everybody struggled during COVID.
Pilot is different than CPC. I'm not making any excuse for why they don't play pilot.
Okay. Any further discussion on Article 12, Section 13?
I want to kind of tie the other three together, and there's a reason for the removal of the invasive species. We all know what they are. There's barberry. Anybody who does not like ticks should not like barberry because the mice hide under it, and if you have it on your property, get rid of it. So, we have Gould Meadows, we have Kripala, and we have the Bullard Woods that are all asking for money to remove invasive species. If Gould Meadows removes invasive species, the properties right next door to them are going to have birds and bees and who knows what else carrying those seeds and invasive species back to each one of these projects. My, my personal favorite, I think, is Gould Meadows. I, I don't know how many of you have really appreciated the difference that the Gould Meadows people have made to that particular property, but it's really pretty amazing, and it's been done, not entirely, but to a great degree, with volunteer labor. So, if we let the invasive species proliferate in Kripala, which abuts it, or Bullard Woods, which also abuts it, then we're shoveling against this tide. It's a, you know, it's Sisyphus with the rock. It, you know, we really need to keep that whole end of the lake as free of invasive species as we can, and I think, you know, for everybody's enjoyment. Kripala lets everybody walk down there, Bullard Woods is beautiful, Gould Meadows, we all get to enjoy it. It's the purpose of this community preservation is to try and, and preserve those parts of our community that everyone can enjoy.
Any further discussion? Article 12, Section 13.
Hi, Brad Fitzgerald, 89 Hawthorne Street. Speaking about 13, 15, and 17, if Sisyphus had to move a rock, the rock is the Stockbridge Bowl Association. I've written to them. For those of us who are at Gould Meadows, who obviously love it and who are there daily, and Bullard Woods, I have witnessed an upsetting change, my neighbors included some of them, over the last 20 years, from paving the road. What we're seeing here in budgetary items is removal of invasive species. It could be kudzu, we all know, but in fact, that's not what's going on. There are, plants alone do not a forest make. There are fauna. It is rare for those of us who frequent it so often to see a skunk, a groundhog, a deer. As for pollinators and birds, I see crows, I see squirrels, I love them, but that's it. You have a dearth of wild animals over this last two decades, gone. Then we have environmentalists who are doing no mo may in an effort to increase pollination, but instead, I, I did witness, a couple years ago, a hawk from Tanglewood come down and grab a baby rabbit, but it's because Gould Meadows is mowed. Those high grasses provide enormous protection to all sorts of fauna, from sun, from bad weather, and from predators, and quite frankly, from humans. So, we're, we're looking at budgetary items that are talking about preserving open space. That's a little bit of a euphemism. Instead, what you are doing is humanizing what would have been Mrs. Bullard's gift of a preserve. In fact, if you were to go to a reserve, as intended, and I personally looked up information with her with the help of the local librarians, it would be as though there were no man, and instead, you were to walk in alone, being the only man, what might that look like? It is not groomed trails, picnic tables, signage, and instead of kudzu, if a tree should fall, under which should, should be good for all sorts of animals who would want to burrow there, including bears as a den, they cut it down. They make it perfect. As a matter of fact, now Gould Meadow and Bullard Woods are perfect for humans. It's not unlike Central Park. So, when we're looking at this funding, these terms are talking about removal of invasive species, but it is at the expense of forest and animals. There's more to do. They removed sludge from the Stockbridge Bowl, and then they removed trees over between Gould Meadow, and instead took mud, threw it there, put up plastic pipes all along. That's not really a nature reserve. I speak because I'm not upset about money being used to help a reserve for animals and plants. I'm upset that beyond what you're claiming for removal of invasive species from those of us who live there, my home is 80 feet away. I bought my home many years ago because of that preserve. Tanglewood, yes and no, I like. It's now become a little bit of a wedding hall. I didn't expect that. I expected more Tchaikovsky, Schubert, and Bach. Not a bat mitzvah, not a wedding. I'm happy for all of the celebrants, but that wasn't the intended of Lin Center and the Wheatley with the fireworks, so.
Let's try to keep it to the invasion.
I'm here to say, all of that is in, is encroachment on nature. These budgetary items are about open community space of our nature reserves. Five more people could come and rebuttal this. I'm a lone voice. I have never spoken at the Stockbridge Town Hall. This is important to say. I'm speaking on behalf, behalf of nature and animals, and I'm degreed in exactly those fields. Doctorate, two masters, bachelors.
So, one of the things that we are losing more than any other thing is the open space that, for ground nesting birds, and yes, there are trails through Gould Meadows, but the, and the reason that they are mowed is to keep people from walking on the birds. The Mass Audubon was consulted, Mass Audubon was consulted when they developed the, the mowing for Gould Meadows. Wide-open spaces for birds are very rare, and, and the, the mowed paths, while they may not be exactly what you think of as being rural forested areas, they do, hopefully, contain people who are walking there to the pathways and not in stomping on the birds.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. Proceed to vote on Section 13. All those in favor, please click one; opposed, click two. Article 12, Section 13 has been approved, 106 to 25. Go on to Article 12, Section 15. Anyone want to speak on Article 12, Section 15? Apparently, we're not going to discuss that, so then we vote on it. All those in favor of Article 12, Section 15, please press one; opposed, please press Article 12, Section 15 has passed, 116 to 17, no. Article 12, Section 17, regarding $3,250 for open space used by the Stockbridge Bowl Association for work at Bullard Woods to preserve open space by removal of invasive species and required permitting. Anyone want to speak to this? Seeing none, we'll move on to the voting. All those in favor of Article 12, Section 17, please press one; all those opposed, please press two. Article 12, Section 17 has passed, 121 to 21. Article 13.
Article, Article 13, fiscal year 2024. I move, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee and pursuant to the Community Preservation Act, that the town appropriate from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund balance $20,000 for historical preservation purposes to be used by Chesterwood for restoration of the Brick Garden Wall.
I don't think you can second your own motion. Any discussion on Article 13? Seeing none, we proceed to vote. All those in favor, please click 1. All those opposed, please click 2. Article 13 has passed, 127, yes, 19, no. Article 15. 14, I'm sorry. Just trying to move things along, folks.
Article 14. I move that the town endorse the resolution on climate change for the town of Stockbridge as printed in the town warrant. This was standard language put forth by the Green Communities Committee, that the state has endorsed, that, that many other towns have also, have already endorsed as well.
Article 14 has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Everyone is read up on it? You know what it's all about? Nick, you have a question?
Wow, what a turnout tonight. I'm Nick Nadorf, 12 Pine Street, Stockbridge, Mass. I'm also the owner of Stockbridge Gas Company, which was originally Stockbridge Coal and Grain, then Stockbridge Fuel and Grain, obviously fossil fuels. I'm not really challenging this as much as I want people to be aware that some of the legislation that's coming down, you're being sold a bill of goods. I want to ask how many people drove a gas car here tonight, or diesel, or electric? Just ask yourself how you got here, for one thing. The other thing is, this type of movement is pretty much grid dependent, and I don't think the grid can replace the BTUs that we're consuming in terms of heating our houses, our industry, things like that. Again, we're being sold a bill of goods. I belong to an association, it's NEH PBA, Northeast Hearth Patio and Barbecue, had three meetings about this. And the dues that they collect now are being used for lawyers to sue the state of New York and the state of Massachusetts, because they want to have houses that are built totally electric. The problem with that is, my dues are going towards lawyers, and then my taxpayers are going to go towards lawyers, so where does the net gain with the lawyers benefiting by associations suing each other? I'm not comfortable with that. The other thought I have is, many people are asking for generators now. I sell them a thousand or 500 gallon underground tank to give them enough storage so they don't run out of gas during a power outage. I'm okay with that. But if someone builds an all-electric house, are they going to want a generator? So I'm, I'm going to kind of backdoor into selling fossil fuels, and then once they have the tank for the generator, I'll probably sell them a gas cooking stove, or a gas heat stove, or a gas water heater, or a gas grill, or a gas fire pit, once they build and pass whatever requirements the building departments would have. So I'm not really in favor of this type of legislation, because I don't think it's possible. Realize, the grid is fed now by about 20% renewables, which is wind or solar. Just round figures, 20% is nuclear, but we've yet to find a solution for what to do with our nuclear waste. If you don't know what we're doing with our nuclear waste, it's stored on top of the reactors. Hello, ala Fukushima, we have no place to put the waste. So years ago, we thought we'd be able to produce very inexpensive electric power with nuclear. We can't. Just mothballing those nuclear plants is going to cost the rate players a lot of money. So I'm not in favor of the idea that we'll criticize what's basically built this nation. One more point. Stockbridge lobbied to get a railroad in here, so we could have a coal pocket. There used to be a six-story Chestnut Building, down where my property is, the depot, next to the train station, and the coal cars would come in, and the elevator would bring it up all summer, and the horse carts would go underneath, and gallop up Prospect Hill and feed all the boilers up there for the rich people. And that's how we got the railroad. And then we went from coal to oil, and now I'm only selling propane, I sold the oil business years ago. But I think this type of discussion is a misnomer, and again, how did you get here tonight? Did you drive a car that used petroleum? Do you heat your house with petroleum? So watch what the politicians are trying to feed us. I don't believe in it, and I hope you can think the same way I'm doing. Thank you very much, Gary.
Thank you, Nick. Is there any further discussion? Excuse me. On Article 14, before we move along. Seeing none, we proceed to vote. All those in favor of Article 14, please click 1. Opposed, please click 2. Article 14 has passed, 96 in favor, 37 against. Article 15.
I move that the town vote to have the town elected town clerk become an appointed town clerk as provided in MGL C41 S1B, contingent upon a favorable vote of the ballot question on the May 21st, 2024 town election.
Do I hear a second? Article, Article 15 has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Charlie?
I'm Charles Kenny, Meadow Road. I was wondering what Terry thought about this.
She's, she's in favor of it.
I think down the road, I'm not planning on going anywhere, but I think. I think that it's a good safety measure for the town. The town clerk's job has become so much bigger, and there's, you know, so much you have to know. I think it's good to be able to, when the time comes, when I'm 95 or whatever, go outside, so you're not dependent upon just the town, anyone here in the town. You could look outside the town. I think it's a good safety measure.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, we proceed to vote, which really allows us to vote tomorrow. All those in favor of Article 15, please click 1. All those opposed, click 2. Article 15 has passed, 116 to 13, no's. Article 16.
Article 16. I move that the town vote to have the town's elected tree warden become an appointed tree warden, as provided in Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 1B, contingent upon a favorable vote on the ballot question at the May 21st, 2024 town election.
Article 16 has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Sounds a lot like 15, doesn't it? Okay, seeing no discussion, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of Article 16, please click 1. Opposed, click 2. Article 16 has passed, 124, yes, 13, no. We'll move on to Article 17.
I move that the, I move that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a five-year contract commencing on July 1, 2025, with a qualified vendor selected by Mass Department of Environmental Protection through a competitive bid process for recycling processing services for the town, conditioned on town meeting approval in the spring of 2025 for funding for these services, and subject to the Board of Selectmen's determination that the contract is in the best interests of the town.
Article 17 has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, please click 1. Opposed, click 2. Article 17 has passed, 129 in favor, 9 against. Article 18.
I move that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to negotiate a ground lease for the property located at 5A Glendale Middle Road, for the purpose of operating a cell tower and accessories, and on such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen deems in the best interest of the town. Provided further, the town authorizes the Board of Selectmen to enter into a lease for the term or terms acceptable to the Selectmen for up to 35 years.
Did I hear a second? Thank you. You may have noticed a little change in the, in the way that was written, but it basically cleared it up. So we're going to go with the, with the, with the version that Chuck read. Is there any discussion? Henry?
The lease agreement is for 35 years, you said? Up to 35. Up to. So explain to me what that means. Up to.
Verizon right now is evaluating all their cell towers for future service, including the 5G that's coming in the area, so they've identified various cell towers that are priorities that they want to lock in for the next up to 35 years. What they'll be is five-year increments, seven of them, in a lease agreement that would allow Verizon to continue and operate the tower for the next 35 years.
So every five years, you would get to renegotiate a fee that, the fee that they're paying us?
Yes, that would allow us to have up to seven extensions of the initial five-year one.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we proceed to vote. On Article 18. All those in favor, please click 1. All those opposed, please click 2. Article 18 has passed, 129 in favor, 5 opposed. Before we move on to Article 19, which involves a, sort of a memorial to one of our favorite daughters, Mary Flynn, I'd just like to remind everyone that on Monday, May 27th, the town of Stockbridge will be honoring the veterans for Memorial Day, starting with a cemetery ceremonies at 11:00 a.m., 12:15, a parade, going to go from here, the town offices, and they're going to march or ride down Main Street. At 12:45, there'll be a memorial program at the Congregational Church at the conclusion of the parade, and kids and family activities until 1:45, including free hot dogs, chips, and beverages. It's going to be a nice, I hope it's a nice weather day, and we can get out and honor our veterans. Article 19.
Article 19. I move that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by gift of parcel of land located on Park Street, to wit, the lot shown on Assessors Map 107, Lot 69, owned by the Laurel Hill Association, for general municipal purposes, including parking for the Ice Glen, Laura's Tower, and Mary Flynn Trail, for no consideration and on such other terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen deem appropriate, with the understanding that by acquiring said property, the town of Stockbridge will be the owner of and responsible for the maintenance of the Mary Hopkins Goodrich Bridge.
Article 19 has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of Article 19, please click 1. Opposed, click 2. Article 19 has passed, 128 in favor, 10 opposed. Article 20.
I move that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court for the enactment of special legislation entitled Act Authorizing the Town of Stockbridge to Modify Fired Department Employment, as set forth in the town warrant, provided however, that the General Court shall be authorized to make ministerial, clerical, and editorial changes of form only to said bill, unless the Board of Selectmen approves amendments to the bill before enactment by the General Court, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to approve such amendments.
Article 20 has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we proceed to vote. All those in favor, click 1. Opposed, click 2. Article 20 has passed by a vote of 122 in favor, 7 against, and that concludes our recorded articles. I would like to thank all the voters that came and stayed through this meeting. We can't have this meeting without you folks showing up, and we really appreciate it. So you should really give yourselves a round of applause for coming in and helping us do the town's business. We are going to adjourn to the annual elections. We need a motion to that effect, Jamie? We need a motion to that effect, Jamie? Well, I'll do it. I can't do it. A motion from the floor will do it. Nick, you had to say something first? Go ahead.
So this is more on a positive note, and if you want to leave, it's okay. But I drive through Stockbridge every day. I love it here. I've been here since nineteen seventy-three. Bought a house together with someone in nineteen seventy-five. I love the place. I worked my life as a servant to your community. But in driving around, I want to thank everybody in town that's done a lot of things for us, including the Proctor Hall Reservation, the Cat and Dog Fountain, the Elm Street Fountain, which isn't coming up. But I always liked that one on the side that says, "Utility is preferable to adornment." I always liked that thing. The Flailing Moors did a great job running around. This Complete Streets things have given us something I've been after for a long time. And I want to thank Michael Canales, Christine Gaglardi, and Hugh Page for getting the walkway done from the affordable housing. I've been beating that dead horse for years. And it's done, and it looks great. Another sidewalk. I like to call it the Craig Whalen Memorial Sidewalk because he was complaining that the weeds wouldn't allow him to walk from his house on Goodrich Street where he was born into Stockbridge. And now we have a sidewalk there. So I want to thank everyone, the Selectmen, the Finance Committee, anybody that's been on board with making our town much better. And I just feel really great about living here. You've done a wonderful job, and I'm very proud to be a member of Stockbridge. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Is there any other business that should properly come before this meeting? If not, we will now have that motion to adjourn and seconded. And we can move on to tomorrow's vote. Please, everyone, vote.